It is eight fifty-nine by certain clocks, nine o'clock. Uh, we will begin this work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Oh, I just didn't have an agenda pulled up.
Yes.
I was so entertained by. What uh, what's first on the agenda?
Calendar review.
Calendar review by amazing Sandra Pettis. Thank you. Thank you, Justin. For all that IT help.
Seems like a fairly easy one next week.
So we set up this week.
Yeah.
And the tenor's pieces just fall into every line of the schedule.
Okay, I'm gonna put today as late. Okay, so Monday the fourteenth, um, all I'm showing is Lake County School District Board of Education regular meeting from five thirty to eight. And uh, planning commission meeting from four to six.
Um, are we?
Are operational check-ins posted?
No, 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 yeah.
No, no, no. That's on there. Uh, Tuesday, the fifteenth, um, have your regular meeting from eleven to two. Uh, regular city council meeting is from six to eight. And the Lake County Conservation District meeting has been canceled. Wednesday, the sixteenth, all I'm showing is community coffee from eight thirty to ten. There is currently nothing on the seventeenth. And on the eighteenth, uh, fire management board meeting from nine to eleven. Twin Lakes Community Coffee from nine to ten and the IMTPR meeting from ten to twelve. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Let me pull this back up here, there's sort of an agenda.
Um.
You can switch back over.
If I'm gonna share one, I'm gonna be down here, right? Are you just sharing the screens? Uh, would I pull up or?
I stopped sharing. Normally when you change screens, you have to like reshare that page. Um, so it's kind of here, but you do it from the student panel.
Yeah.
Okay. So for the next hour, I'm gonna go through the quarter two budget budget presentations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that includes an overview of Q one budget amounts and year-to-date actuals for all funds. Um, and then we'll take a little break. And then I'm gonna talk us a little bit about um, the budget direction and guidelines that we've prepared for staff. We haven't shared these out. I I asked um, Liz if we could wait until she got back, so that way when people have a lot of questions, we are both a resource to help them understand. We've never actually had a budget process or a budget packet before that walks people through. Here's how you create your budget. So we created that document and we just don't wanna hoist new things on people without an opportunity for them to have time to ask questions, have us walk them through things if they need it. So I'm gonna show those to you guys. Um, and and kind of talk about what we'll be sharing out with staff. And get feedback from you guys on all of those things. We'll do that from ten thirty to eleven. Trinity Tard. Here we are. All right, so I am gonna pull up, um, my budget presentation here. Um, and I've got a couple of other um, documents pulled up, so I can just kind of click through them with you guys. Just bless you.
Thank you. My allergies are wreaking havoc today.
It's the conversation in the morning.
All right, so we're gonna talk about quarter one, um, how we performed with our budget. I'm super excited to say the books were reconciled before Q one. So these are actually really what happened in the quarter, which is great. Um, when it came on last year, we didn't have the twenty twenty-three audit done, so the books weren't closed for twenty twenty-three, which means they weren't closed for all twenty twenty-four. Um, so reconciling is just saying, hey, what happened on the bank account is actually what we have recorded within that time period. Um.
So like these numbers match these numbers, right? Okay, good.
Yes. So so when that doesn't happen, you could admit something, you could have parked uh, an expense in the wrong category. Um, but we feel pretty confident that we have really gotten our systems styled to have things put in the correct places. Um, so I'm really excited.
Is this a victory that um, I can use in discussions with the public?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. This has taken up a lot of, it also worked.
Okay. So. Yes. I imagine it may have never have happened in the past.
If it did, I think it probably was before we switched to Tyler.
Okay.
Um, budget milestones. So today, we're gonna overview Q one twenty twenty-five budgeted and actuals for all funds. Um, we'll also have you guys provide guidance on the twenty twenty-six budget development uh, and give some time to ask some questions. Um, on the fifteenth, we're gonna release the twenty twenty-six budget package uh, to offices and departments. Um, our budget package has a walkthrough, priorities, goals for staff. Um, it also will include a secondary Excel document where um, we show people their last two years of actuals and then by line item. So every single item in line, so if it's office supplies or rent or whatever it is, each one of those account codes with the title and its roll-up, which people feeling like their roll-ups are confusing has been a big issue. This will be their opportunity to give some feedback if they'd like to see those roll-ups differently. But it also gives them kind of a historic, here's what you've done the last two years. So that if they've continued to budget, say three thousand dollars in IT software, but that's not actually something that they're coding expenses to, they can see that and start to build better budgets. Um, this will also include any capital requests, so we'll have a worksheet for capital request. And then we'll have a worksheet for FTE request um, by department. So those will be tabs in their Excel sheet. And then we also have grants on a separate tab, because I'd like to know that we're covering operating expenses with or without grants. Um, and we've not really ever broken it out that way when budgeting. Um, the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, or through the twenty-fifth, I really should say, uh, myself and finance will be meeting with offices to help them develop their twenty twenty-six budget. Um, I'm gonna try to really keep work sessions light this week, 'cause I'll be meeting with people live, like all day. Um, that week. October first through the ninth, we'll review Q one and Q two budgeted actuals, so we'll see year-to-date where we at, you know, through our closed books. Um, twenty twenty-six office and department, we'll have preliminary budgets put together. And then twenty twenty-five, we'll have short and long-term updates um, for you guys. October fifteenth, um, the preliminary budget will be released for public comment and review. And then November twelfth, we'll look at Q one through Q three, twenty twenty-five budget to actuals. Um, we'll look at Q four projections, so we can get an idea of where we think we'll land for the end of the year. And then the twenty twenty-six preliminary county budget, capital requests and mill levy scenarios will be ready at that time. Um, I would like to not be frantically passing our budget mid-December, which is what happened last year.
Yeah.
When I joined, it was wild.
I think I was at some of those meetings. Seems so like vague and just like, oh, well, that's that's actually mixed in with that. That's why that number looks that way. And everything was just kind of like, and no one.
They hadn't had a finance director since, what, July, August, to be fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got left in the lurch, so.
And the budgeting has never looked like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the bright side, there was like so much room for improvement and like low-hanging fruit to really take care of.
Right, so I'm gonna talk about office department memos. So each memo has um, the year-to-date actual spend, a projection of where we're headed, and also what was budgeted. And there are two sections in each of these updates. The Safeway section, um, which would highlight up to three key talking points, just to give you guys an idea about notable events or developments or interesting things um, for the department or the community or interesting for you.
I'm sorry, it just took me way too long to figure out why that was called the Safeway section. I'm like, what is going on with Safeway? Really, okay, thanks. That makes perfect sense. I think I have brain bugs, so if I ask a lot of questions, please forgive me.
And then the budget update, this kind of eh eh, we've got the um, the the template in each one of these with the actuals and the budget. But then we ask for department directors to kind of give you a synopsis of the why behind the numbers you're seeing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I hit escape for a second.
I like that, 'cause the but, the memos, the budget part is usually oftentimes excuse me, avoided or like not fleshed out.
Yeah. Um, so let me find. Um, so to access all of these, um, I put the memo into our our team's meeting. Um, so the memo is here, there's a typo in it, but it was PDFed and that's what I was working with, so I will apologize for the typo. But when you open this memo, if you ever want to get back to what we're about to look at, this little Q two link, a little blue link, you click on that and it'll it'll get you to what we're about to look at. Put it back down. Okay, so within each one of these folders is the Q two memo for each department. Um, I'll start with admin. Did a lot of these. Um, so here is the B O C C. I put this guy together. I did not give you guys a Safeway, 'cause I didn't know what interesting things to tell you about your your budget for yourself. But I did do a budget update, so this really kind of walks you through where we at, how much have you spent of your total budget, um, and where we project you would end up. Um, key variances. Um, so that means how different is what what you did from what we budgeted for? So personnel costs are twenty-two percent of the budget for you guys. Um, your expenditures are about five percent of the one point six million, and I'm gonna show you our table in just a second. It will, you guys were under twenty-five percent, would you expect to be at about a quarter of spendings for Q one? Um, overall, uh, we see that we're in a strong position with no significant overspending concerns. Um, I'm so sorry, I should have taken this out. Uh, originally, um, your personnel numbers, I took one look at them and I was like, that's not right. So I got into Tyler and found that uh, for some reason, deputy county manager had been paid out of your budget. So I had that moved.
The whole, the whole salary was paid out of our budget?
It was just two weird payments. I think it just got coded wrong. So I recoded, or I didn't. I had someone in finance recode it, 'cause I went and figured it out. I was like, this doesn't feel right.
I mean, we did say that we wanted to increase the pay and it could come out of our budget.
For the short.
Yeah, 'cause it wasn't budgeted there, like ten isn't paid out of your budget.
So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We probably did say that, and that's probably what happened, but.
We can't do that.
So here are your budgeted numbers, here's what we've seen so far. And then here are um, your expenses to date. I do wanna say that in our pro services line, and I mentioned this above, um, the C O P payment was budgeted here.
That's weird.
So that will come out of here, so while this looks looks low, we know that we've got some some bigger things going out of there.
I think that might have been the, because we had, because of the like, having hired contact rock, the um, C P attorneys and other folks that OB Y that landed. There were professionals that had to be engaged and paid for, and that's probably why.
Um, let's see. County attorney, do you wanna talk about yours?
Yeah, the one, and something that's a good segue in terms of talking about professional services, um, if we go down to, where we're gonna get down to the numbers, you'll see that the Q one for um, professional services is incredibly low. Um, I'm not sure what's going on with here. I I have approved and coded a lot more bills from our environmental order.
They just didn't fall by here, no.
Eh, and that could be, it did, they did get paid out during that time. We've also got a thirty-seven thousand dollar bill that will be coming uh, for approval this week for the sort of fire station litigation, um, that full-day trial and everything leading up to that. And we're still just waiting for the um, order from Judge Churetis upstairs as to the outcome of that, as well as on our motion to dismiss in the companion case that's pending in Araco County, um, where we got brought in because of the surety paying on the bottom for us. So a lot of things still pending, but just wanted y'all to be aware when you stay like, oh, my goodness, why? And that's because of that, it all just kind of lands in this quarter now. So um, I I expect that we'll probably be close on that professional services budget by the end of the year because of of those expenses and the continuing stuff with the water enterprise and any other.
Is um, legal fees part of that settlement that we are going for on that southern fire station?
The legal fees?
Yeah.
They won't, they've refused to settle, so we had to go, that's why we had to go through the trial and that's.
We're like suing them.
So and and they crossed the counter to try to avoid paying us by saying we owed them money as well. So once, once we get the determination, and frankly, I don't know how in the world we don't prevail on both our trial upstairs as well as our motion to dismiss, we can ask for recovery fees and cost. I'm not gonna hold my breath on that, because the entity that was engaged with was a shell company. Um, and unless liability is found against the principals, that entity has no money, has no assets. So I'm not, I'm not gonna hold my breath on us being able to recover much technically. We have the ability to, under the law, and we will file whatever judgment leads we can to preserve that, just in case the money wins the lottery or comes into property or something like that, if we get a a judgment against the um, any of the principals. So we'll try. We did get eighty-six thousand, maybe six thousand plus dollars from the surety on the performance bond, which has pretty much covered the cost of our legal fees for the litigation.
Yeah, that's like less than a quarter of what, it's like four fifty or something?
Four fifty was our losses in that.
When we, when we receive money from the settlement, say.
Yeah.
Um, where, would it go into your, would it go into this budget?
We don't really have a revenue um, line for this. Typically, it would go against the project. And so we've been tracking that, those fees and costs and stuff, so when we do prepare, we have that information really available. File for recovery, but my expectation would go against the project, go back into our.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just wondering where it lands in our, on our budget lines.
Yeah. Yeah. Other than that, we're um, yeah. We're a bit tricky there, uh, for the surety for that Q one. Thank you.
Um, county manager? Well, that is, that is not my Q two memo. Sorry, I uploaded the wrong one. I'll have to, I'll have to upload it for you guys. We're under budget, because I'm the deputy county manager in the county.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're well under budget there, and I'll re-upload that, I'm sorry. Worked on this. 'Cause I had to redo the, the salaries. Um, so this is for the finance team. We're also under budget. Because.
You're doing that.
You're not our finance director yet, so that's exciting, which is great, because our pro services will be a little bit over. Um, and I did just wanna let you guys know that a big part of that is that we finished the twenty twenty-three audit in January of twenty twenty-five. So any work we had provided um, for us for the twenty twenty-three audit, so that includes paying auditor.
Mm-hmm.
And also any additional um, outside CPA help that we've had, they all got coded to one, one year.
But we didn't budget for the, did we budget for that expense?
Of course not. Um, so I, honestly, we're in the the general fund, so I don't, and I think we've saved so much not having a finance director um, until, I mean, we still have to do this, the last inter, we have one last interview and then second rounds will be two more ones before we have that person hired and onboarded. Like that will cover the cost of the of the additional pro services, but yeah, I think we'll definitely be over budget here for pro services.
Yeah.
Um, and have to do a supplemental at the end of the year, well. Um, we haven't touched any of the services line. Um, one thing that's kind of interesting that I definitely will change for next year is we've always put people's IT cost in their budget.
Yeah.
And I really think we want to report all of our IT in one place.
Yeah.
And label it, so we know who the IT goes to, right? We want it to be IT annex or whatever it is, so we can keep track of those costs. But it would be so nice to be able to run a report that just all IT costs or have, um, I know that legal services have been budgeted in legal, they've been all budgeted out of legal in everybody's department. They've been, like, there's been a mix.
Yeah.
In my mind, I'd love to have it budgeted in legal, but you know, have it coded so you can see who it's for. But like, say, overall, this is what this service, like, this is what this costs us.
Yeah.
And that's hard to do when it's mixed in different funds.
Yeah.
It just makes the reporting really clunky.
So on that point, I advocated for that last year when this budget was being created, but the commissioners wanted it to be in the department budget, so they would be responsible for those expenditures. But that kind of makes it difficult for us to really track what services and also sometimes we're getting copies of bills where outside council have been engaged without us knowing about it, it might be on something we could have handled in-house, to say funny. So I would continue to advocate for what Candace is suggesting, that it comes through us, but it's it's broken out, so we can track which department is using which piece of stuff.
Yeah, that makes very sense.
Yeah.
Plus they would be, I mean, the individual departments would still be um, like saying what legal fees they need to do their job, and then it would just be going through legal more annually and big picture.
Right.
Yeah, that makes. Well, I see why they were doing, they wanted to do it the other way for their brains, but for the overall health of the organization, that doesn't make sense.
One of the biggest areas that we have had a lot of savings is in IT. So what was happening before, 'cause they started auditing our P cards.
Mm-hmm.
Is IT pays for, you know, I'll just make up something. We don't use DocuSign, but you can buy licenses. So like DocuSign, you buy a whole slew of licenses for people that you need.
Yeah.
And it ends up being much cheaper per license than if each person goes and buys DocuSign.
Right.
Then that is like a two hundred and fifty per year cost, right? Versus it costs you, you know, an upfront fee of like twenty-five dollars or whatever, or whatever the base fee is. And then you pay like ten dollars per license, right, or whatever the fee is. So it saves you a lot of money to have bulk licensing. We audited P cards and saw that lots of people were buying things like Canva, or they were paying for
With Zoom.
Zoom, or they were paying for, you know, like Microsoft Word, and it's like, no, 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 we we can get you a license for about ten dollars a piece, instead of everybody buying it for two fifty on their P card.
Yep.
So I like budgeting for things um, in the department, so we can see like, you you don't have IT expenses for you to go spend on your P card.
Yeah.
So then it has to go through IT, and then we don't buy software that, then it doesn't work, and we pay for software for three years that no one in IT knows exists.
Yep.
And they haven't helped you onboard it.
Yeah.
So then we're paying for a software that's not working versus if that has to go through IT, which is in operations. Um, then we can really get better pricing by by purchasing licenses in bulk.
Yeah. So for visualization purposes, I'm I'm trying to wrap my head around this. It's basically each, we wanna have an IT budget and like legal budget for each department, that's like a separate line item, kind of?
Yeah, so it would all live in, um.
Like the label would all live in the county attorney's budget, but it would show line items for each department.
For each depart, okay, the opposite sort of, instead of each department having a line item for that and that.
Legal, if it was legal, right?
Right.
And then under legal, it would be professional services. And this would equal, instead of like twenty thousand, it would equal a hundred thousand. And then in this, there would be, it would be broken out into different pages.
Yeah.
It would show like, oh, zero zero seven is twenty thousand.
To CPD, I'd say.
Yeah, CPD.
And to our water enterprise, yeah.
Zero zero six is thirty thousand.
And that, that's gonna be a pretty significant change for budgeting, because they've always put it in different departments. It makes reporting really a nightmare. And it also opens people up to having that money in their budget, so then they're buying IT things on their their P card. And it's like, well, actually, no, we have a license for a fraction of the cost of what you just bought.
And then this would look the same for, this would look the same for IT.
Yeah.
It would be like, IT, what, licenses?
Yeah.
A hundred thousand dollars, and then that will get broken up into the various.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, thank you for walking me through that, yes.
I like visuals a lot, and it helps me learn.
All right, so here is operations, which IT is in. Their other expenses includes um, software and hardware. Um, so if you're looking in Tyler, it's not called other expenses. We just, they're for each department. I don't know, I think it's in here, I'll show you one for CPD. There are actually several line items for everything. We just roll them up into categories, so you're not scrolling for three days, looking at every line item that exists. Um, but I know that that line is pretty high, because it was there. Um, their personnel includes uh, all the operations staff. They've really been working on accessibility. Um, we are really trying to beef up and do better with our IT. One of the the biggest things that I've seen that holds us back operationally is having a lot of hmm, software, because people have been able to buy software and and hardware without going through IT. Sometimes we buy things that sound great, and we think are gonna solve a lot of our organizational problems. And then maybe they would be if someone who had IT background was was knowing they existed and helping with the implementation.
Hmm.
Um, but sometimes that doesn't happen, so then we find out we have systems that don't work and we're paying for them. And I have a really big goal to make sure that we have the IT support that we need and that our systems work, because we create a lot of manual work that really is a time time suck.
Mm-hmm.
You do intend other things, because we just don't often have systems working the way that they need to. So that is one of, one of the big things I'd like to really work on in this next year's budget and planning.
Sounds great.
I have uh tools in my toolbox that I've paid for that I still don't quite know how to use effectively, like a multimeter.
Yeah.
I can totally track out why my nineteen seventy-nine KE one hundred doesn't have spark if I really dived in and learned the multimeter very well, and I still need to, so I think it's the same.
You can tell if things are on or off with it.
Yeah, I can do that, you know, like, can I touch, can I touch this wire?
Yeah.
Oh, no, okay, I didn't hit the right breaker. But imagine we have tools like that here in the system that if we learned how to use, it can make jobs easier.
I'm a mini, I've given a couple of them ultimates, if we can get these working by the end of the year, we will not be paying for them again. Good job.
Nice.
Uh duh.
Just throw the Candace hammer down.
No, all done, put it down. This is no muss. Um, so here's our HR budget. Um, we can see their personnel costs, we really um have beefed up and added one more person in HR. Um, I'll say HR has one of the toughest jobs at the county, they deal with a lot of really challenging things. And we really didn't have a well-established HR process.
Yeah.
And they have really done a lot of work to beef up those processes. We've made all of our um performance reviews um digital. So that it's, can be logged in and, and each member, the person reviewing, the person being reviewed can see it. It's standardized, so everybody's being reviewed in the same way. It also has the option for um one-on-one notes, so that those notes become a conversation piece, so each time you meet with somebody. And that's a really big thing I've implemented, is doing consistent one-on-one meetings with department directors. And then the expectation is that they'll be doing the same with their staff. So really trying to have it be standardized, so when we do things like merit, um, which we do a merit increase each year, that everybody has the same way that they are assessed, we don't have the exact same goals that we're working towards, cause each person has individual goals. But that it's really very clear that as a director, here's how you assess people, here's how you um document that. Um, doing performance reviews was really new, that got started when Tim um was here and um, it was a piece of paper that went back and forth, and, and it didn't really give a great opportunity for explaining the why behind a rating, and I think the why is the most important piece.
Yeah.
So HR has done a phenomenal job of, of doing those things and getting all that started for this year. Um, all of, not all of, but a lot of the training budget lives in um HR's department. Um, what we were finding is if you were a department director, did not value training, like additional knowledge or learning, then when we asked for budget cuts, it was the first thing cut. Um, a lot of people don't realize how expensive investing in staff to learn their job from a time perspective, from the work getting done perspective, and from any training you invest into staff is really expensive. One of the biggest ways you can retain staff is to make sure they have a path to grow by being able to learn on the job skills and continue to use those skills. So we have, we have always, or we haven't always, this last year we put training, so for any staff in, into the HR budget. Just because we wanna make sure that that's not the thing cut, because it's not valued.
So that's now like legal, will be.
Yep.
It's all under there now.
Yeah, because what we kept seeing is that everyone's training would just get.
Yeah.
If, if it wasn't important to you as, to the director of a department, it would be the first thing to take the budget cut.
But they're still informing that budget line for their own.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I will say that for Road and Bridge, we, we will put the training for their CDLs in their budget, we didn't budget any money for people with CDLs, which means we've got nine, or not nine, but we, we've got a lot of people working on the road right now. And they're gonna end up probably doing a ton of overtime, because there's only so many people with CDLs right now. Versus if we had budgeted for CDLs.
Yeah.
We would have spent less on the CDLs than we are on overtime, and that, that's just a understanding budget sort of thing. So I will say that for, for Road and Bridge, next year, we will be budgeting for CDLs. And I think it would be really intelligent for us to bring a human here to do that training and see if other partners in the community need to do that training.
Yeah.
To get the rate down. Um, rather than what we've done in the past is send each person to Denver to do their CDL training. So then we're paying for lodging and food and travel and the class itself. Um, and that just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so we will definitely be doing that a little different. Um, there are a lot of these, are there certain ones you would like to, to see? You can click through all of these at any time, each department did one.
Let me see the sheriff.
Sure. Public safety. Look at this little, and just let me know if you want me to go back up. So.
Budget, wait, can you, yeah, can you go back up for a second?
Sure.
Just so we understand, anticipated, no down.
We're generally under budget on personnel, because they have often a hard time filling a lot of those positions and, and keeping people in them.
Do you know what the HP applications are?
I'm not sure. Seems to be a unique call, call, I would, oh, type of stuff, but it, that's not.
You can specifically add inclusive staff, correct?
Sure.
Copies, right? This is the most, the rising community activity, I don't know what that is.
Sheriff's copies.
If you make a note. Oh, for probably the records request, so they ask for criminal records and they charge for those.
Yep.
To get copies of those, they have the.
Why, what does that mean that as the summer months typically see a rise in community? I'm trying to understand the whole sentence. Like, what is the rise in community activity that would
They probably.
Lead to them needing to do more copies of records?
They probably have more.
DUIs and altercation.
Or.
That also could be additional services, like extra duty.
Yeah.
Type services, they contract with like the race series and other big events to provide services and those um entities pay the sheriffs office for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that could be part of it.
Which is an interesting sentence. Okay, yeah, I think that knowing this stuff, this stuff I love, where it's like, yes, we typically, just like revenue. Like revenue is not a quarter in the beginning, a quarter in the middle, a quarter at the end.
Yeah, it's billing.
And, yeah, usually you see revenue fluctuations, and I'm assuming that we see expense fluctuations too, so knowing like yeah, we should be at fifteen percent in Q one, or we should be at thirty-nine percent in Q one.
Yeah.
Versus like.
Well, and that's why we ask people to give this insight.
Yeah, I love it, I love it.
Because even though your pro services is a bit low right now, once we have the next um uh COP payment.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a huge payment.
Yeah.
So then we won't see it like each quarter drop, it's like I have to pay it twice a year.
Yeah.
So here's um his projected revenues. Projected expenses.
Yeah. Personnel is.
So their highest one is training.
Three point three million. What am I at sixteen percent, cause of what they said?
Yeah.
It's so interesting. And training, is this training gonna stay here because it's required training? Because I can see that that's how like, in my mind, that's the Pub Works reasoning to keep it in.
Yeah.
So this one will stay there too, right?
Yes.
Cause it's specialized for post.
Yeah, you have to have this training.
Yeah.
To have these personnel, just like you have to have the CBL training.
Yeah.
These are not like.
These are not like continuing education or, yeah, so yes, that is a great clarification.
Yeah, right.
There will be some trainings like that that are job specific.
Yeah.
That would still live here, cause they're not gonna not send people to post, no one would be able to work for them.
Yeah.
Like, just like IV training or needle training in, in public health.
Um, if we end up to like nobody's fault or anything, like way under budget on personnel for the sheriff, what, what happens if there's an extra million dollars sitting in there, one point two million, like, in that part of the budget, does that roll over to next year, or can we be like, hey, let's put this towards your innovations, like is that even a thing?
We can just decide what have, they can request that it gets rolled over in their budget for next year, but we ultimately decide what happens if they.
Okay.
Um, wait, can you go down for a second?
Just me?
Why, why no transfers in Q one? Did we not? Or, I know we've had to bring people back and forth from Chafee.
So those are transfers between funds, I believe.
Oh.
That's like negative.
Cause I was thinking of professional services type thing.
Yeah, that's not, that's not, that's like budget transfers between funds.
Where that goes.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Other expenses.
And what other funds does the sheriff's department have connected to? Which, what funds do they have?
So transfers happen between Heath and, I'm trying to think about it, is, I can't, I always get this confused, E nine one one is separate, right? So sometimes that's a transfer. Cause he's statutorily required to have them.
Do they have to, ever have to do anything with like the ambulance to the hospital or on certain calls or?
That should be our services, yeah.
Wait, for services, yeah. Wait, Candace, which direction would that go? Would the E Y nine on one fund be paying the sheriff to house E nine one one?
So.
Or the other way?
Sure, someone had thought about that before they wrote that agreement. They end up writing, this is hilarious, it's not hilarious, it's quirky, probably needs to be redone. Um, E nine one one has a document that outlines that each entity that services, uses their services, pays into the county, into the general fund.
No.
Well, that, that would be, that would be okay, except for E nine one one lives in the general fund.
Yep.
So then it's like we write, we're writing a check to ourselves every year. Yeah, it's fine. We take care of it on the accounting end, but I was like, no one really thought about where this lived when we said this is what we would do. Um, so that's one of his transfers, and then I can't off the top of my head think of what else that he transfers to.
Okay. So he pays, he expects to pay three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars or whatever.
Yeah.
To the E nine one one.
Not to them, I'm sure he has transfers to other departments, I would imagine, he probably has transfers to Pub Works when they have to do stuff. Um, cause Pub Works bills, like departments.
Okay.
They, they have a different way that they have to kind of track all of their services.
Okay.
Like Pub Works bills public health and DHS.
And pros?
Yeah.
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 I see them bill a lot of pros.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to know that, to make sure that some of that transfer stuff isn't, isn't coming along like professionals, cause I also think about the services through the hospital, I'd hope, I don't know how that's tracked in terms of.
Yeah, no, that's not a transfer, transfers on the books between funds, cause you, that's the only way you can move money to the funds.
Right, right.
What about um? Do, okay.
So I wonder, is that like a cushion that he puts in there, so in case he does have an overage of like personal services could be transferred?
I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Heath personally, I guess. Cause I don't know what was in his head when he did that part. Did his budget, but I will this next year, cause we're gonna work together on it, we've already sat down and started to talk about projecting out a longer term for him, because he has some things he's statutorily required to do, and those requirements have increased. So really trying to be intentional about having a good plan as some of the new statutory requirements, like knowing when they start.
I'd love to also see, I mean, I feel like the, the race series would be an excellent kind of like case study for seeing who builds the race series and then where all of those transfers go within the county.
Yeah.
For services provided. It's a, I think that would be a wonderful one to tease out, understand this.
Public works, I think, is one I'd really like to
Okay, yes.
See numbers on, um. Road and Bridge might just be depressing, but maintenance is definitely.
Of course. Which one?
It's, yeah, it's start with Road and Bridge.
Why are they separated?
So, Road and Bridge is statutorily created, um, it gets a lot of federal funding and our CIFA.
Mm-hmm.
And our um HUFC report.
There we go.
The Highway User Trust Fund.
Yeah.
So those have to be tracked really in a specific way, they're actually even cited separately um on, on the audit. So they, it has to be in its own
Okay.
Fund, and that's not created by us.
Get three fifty a year, what's miscellaneous revenue, is that the federal and state together or?
I would think a lot of his miscellaneous revenues would be like for materials or services provided, we do a lot of work for the uh city.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and then three fifties what we're getting from the highway fund?
That's why I was wondering if Intergovernment would cover part of the city stuff too.
I know, I bet some of it's recorded in there.
Yeah.
This is the rollup, wait, stay up there, sorry.
Yeah, cause I was, cause the grants are broken out there, I'm wondering if that miscellaneous captures the grants and stuff that they get.
So we do track, some grants are tracked in the department, and some grants are, especially multi-year grants, are actually tracked in our grants fund. Because they have, kind of have to be in order to do the accruals and deferrals correct. So depending on the type of grant, some of the bigger grants are tracked in the grants fund.
Um, and percentage, sorry, this is gonna be a very elementary question, but percentage of budget spent, isn't that more accurately stated as like percentage of budget received?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we're in revenue, yeah.
Yeah.
This is the trick with the rollups, is they're just.
So why are, why are we getting so much more charges for services than we were projecting? If we only thought we were gonna get twenty-six for the year, we're already at twenty-three in the first quarter. Do, is that gonna like just die off for the rest of the year, is it?
I don't think so, I think we.
Also, that's not accurate.
Yeah, we, we have never had our books close, I shouldn't say never. When I came on, we had two years of books not closed, so I don't know what, I mean, if the books aren't closed, people's actuals aren't actuals.
And that's what you mean by it's not accurate, we don't really have data to say what that should look like in a year.
So. When people made this budget.
Yeah.
They didn't have the actual revenues and expenses.
They weren't using.
Just sort of winging it, like, I think, uh, we'll put it right here.
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, they have some.
There's an institutional knowledge in there. They have some of their revenues recorded and some of their expenses recorded, and nobody was going through with a fine tooth comb and saying, is this recorded where it goes?
Okay.
And Patrick and I have a really great system that wasn't in place before I came on, if he doesn't know where something goes.
Yes.
You guys saw the email the other day.
Yeah.
What are these revenues for? Where do they go? And I have asked him when I came on as a finance director, I said, if we don't know, copy me, I'll go help you find it.
Also, people aren't replying all to those, so when somebody's answering, I have no idea.
Yeah.
And Patrick is getting answered, just that's why.
I usually follow up with everybody and go chase it down, and make sure it's done.
I bet you do, I'm just saying, like, from my end, I've got this, I've got a little checkmark that's. I bet you do, I'm just saying, like from my end, I've got this, I've got a little checkmark that says like, where do we want to go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can't check it off, cause nobody's replying off.
Um, and and.
Just to be honest.
Okay, so the annual budget is pretty loose as far as like what we. Like, in this, yeah, this one's.
I think we aren't too far off, a lot of people worked here for a long time. They start to like get an idea of what they think they will get.
Yeah.
But it is not as exact as it will be with, now that we have two years of. Actuals with the books closed.
Well, and if you go up, Michael does make a note of. You go up higher.
Sorry, I'm having that jumped.
Like the PILT transfer?
Yeah.
He he makes a note of that where it's like even acknowledging that there's going to be. When it, when we expect it to come, so that should be landing in Q two.
What is PILT, again, is that federal or state money?
Federal.
Federal.
It's a, it's a payment and load of taxes.
Okay.
And we just got it last month, cause I had an email about. PILTS and.
Will that get that two million dollar line above a lot closer to where it needs to be on the miscellaneous revenue?
It depends, I'd have to really.
See where you put it.
Like see where he put it, so when I log into Tyler, I can see peoples and a lot of departments can't do. So they don't see miscellaneous revenue, let me show you one. It's a good example. Um. Cause I actually did this one for Anne, cause she's been out. Tiki. Let's hope I uploaded the right thing this time. So we made this external of Tyler, but in Tyler, when I look, I see everybody's account codes or can I make this bigger?
Go down to the draggy bar.
Great, I'm like, can't see. So do you see how each one of these has a different number, Andy?
Mm-hmm.
So that is the, in accounting, we have, you know, accounting codes assigned. To line items. Um, because otherwise we'd have people say rent. But rent could be from a million different departments, rent could be from five or six different buildings.
Yeah, this, Jesus, it's like a different, yeah.
So, yeah. It's a, it's just a different way of recording.
Yeah.
So this is how we'll be doing budgets with staff in the future. Is they'll be able to see all of their revenue lines and all of their expense lines and what they spent the last two years. And they'll be using that to inform their budgets.
Okay.
So when you guys are seeing a rollup, right, this is, these are all rolled up into charges for services. So you see charges for services, but really they're made up of. A lot of different things.
And then the finance department has the ability to go into each of these accounts and see what each expenditure was for.
Yeah. Yeah. A- and when departments sit down with us and they're, they feel like, oh, that number doesn't seem right. Like immediately when I saw the B O C C, the county manager and the operations budget, I took one look at it. Just the rollups, and I was like, mm, the salaries are wrong. So I went in and looked at salaries, operations used to be budgeted for in the county manager's department. Now they're separate, because it really is, has become its own department. Um, but the operations staff are still being coded to the county manager's line. And for some reason, I guess because you guys asked for it more and got coded to your line.
Just for a, just for like a payment or two.
Two payments.
Yeah, it's so that we could increase her pay and it wasn't budgeted or something, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. Which is fine.
Yeah.
Because I've covered two people in that department now, so it's.
You're covered, yeah.
But we moved it, cause that makes a lot more sense to keep it clean and where it actually belongs.
Yeah.
But when we see rollups. When you're seeing miscellaneous revenue for Anne, you're seeing all of these things. Because if we went through all of them for every department, I mean, there are hundreds of counties.
Oh, yeah, thousands. Well, not thousands.
But as we're asking the departments to budget, this is what we'll be showing them. Cause we'll be showing them, here's the item, here's the number, here's what it's called, and here's your past two years of actuals.
Mm-hmm.
To help inform, okay, do you keep budgeting for, we'll make up something. Do we keep budgeting for five thousand dollars in code amendments, but for three years, we've never actually spent a dime there?
Yeah.
Right.
Where is, where are you putting those?
Why are you not doing code amendments?
Or is it that maybe we only use them every once in a while, okay, great, budget for it that way.
Yeah.
But we really haven't had actuals done in time. Cause the audit's been behind for people who really have that detailed information to say, okay, well, what I spent last year, I can imagine, maybe I'll have a ten percent increase.
Yeah.
Because the cost of things has gone up. People can't make those informed decisions about their budgets.
This is like bomb squad, it's like this wire goes.
Right.
Here.
That's why when the revenue coming in. When the treasurers. When there are no wires coming from the treasures department into the finance department.
But they're not, there's no colors, they're all the same color wire.
Yes, yes, exactly.
That's a better way to say it.
Yes.
And it's like, oh.
Alright, so we have a few, a few more overall slides, so I'll let you guys go through the Q two memos at your leisure.
Yeah.
They're in there and I'll have the correct one for myself.
Yes, thank you.
I, I'm having trouble getting from the memos to the page that has the numbers. The rollup.
It should be incorporated in the.
You just, did you click on the link?
Cause it should be one document and the se- like the last page should make the number.
Okay, so, let's look at maintenance. Check to do, oh. Okay, I guess the other ones I was looking at, I didn't scroll down far enough, okay, got it, thank you.
So I'm gonna keep going, cause they're supposed to take a break in fourteen minutes.
Fine.
This is super complex subject for me and I'm sure it's not easy for anyone really. So I thank you guys for being so knowledgeable about this, Candace, Chris, and Newsall, also.
Yeah, thank God you're Candace.
Yeah.
This is why we hired her, look at this.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Hell, yeah.
Um, so I wanna give some definitions and then we're gonna look at some overall numbers.
Andy, you're doing great.
Well.
This will be the rollup of all of the things that we've done, so general fund.
Yeah.
Um, that's our primary funding source, most of our revenues come into the general fund. Uh, and any of those Q two memos that you look at where there's not revenues budgeted, they live in the general fund, so finance. We're not charging departments for our services, we're funded by the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
We have expenses related to providing services, but we're not like billing you for running your payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also revenue, revenues from property taxes, sales taxes, general fees and charges, so not specific to like CPD. Or a department, those go in the general fund. Non-general fund, these are other types of funds that we use. Um, they're created in a couple of different ways and Liz and I have been, uh, researching. All kinds of historical documents to ask ourselves, is this fund really a fund? Is it needed to be separate or should it probably live in the general fund? We have thirty-nine funds, which is a lot. Um, not all of them make sense, so we're trying to get that really cleaned up in this year's budget. So types of funds that would not be general funds, enterprise funds, anybody that charges for services. It's like, um, maintenance, Roden Bridge, the water, enterprise fund. Anybody that works like a normal business, we send you a bill, you pay a bill, we record those receipts. Those enterprise funds act like a normal business, they're not in the general fund. Uh, the grants fund, those are often created because they're statutorily required depending on the grant. Uh, and our governmental funds, uh, those help us move funds between governments so that we can track that we've actually built forward, received what we were supposed to have. Internal, go ahead.
Are you gonna give us examples of these?
The fire, I G A, the.
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter, I almost said that shelter, animal shelter.
Whatever they do.
My brain is fried. Uh, internal services funds, that would be like our insurance and I think we've got. Um, a couple of, we have one other fiduciary fund, that's where we have other people's funds and we manage them for them, like retirement. And those have to be kept separate, cause it's not our money.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, statutory funds, that's anything that we're required by statute to have, so that's like. Um, the, um, conservation trust fund is a statutorily created fund. The record placement fund is a statutory fund, anything that's created by statute. And then non-major governmental funds, so public health would be a non-major governmental fund. We're required for the government to have it, but it's not massive. DHS is a non-major governmental fund. Um, if you ever look at our audit, they break out funds by type. So that you can see the balance at the beginning and and the end of the year for each of these types of funds. And when we get to our audit being done, I have a dis- our auditor will join, but we can walk you through the audit and what it says. Cause we do get a lot of questions about it and I'll always hope you answer them if if people have them, but it is nice to just understand what you're looking at. Okay, so our revenues, our general fund revenues, what we budgeted for the year. Is that twenty-three mil, where we're at is the three point three five, or three nine five mil. Uh, non-governmental funds, we're sixteen, or we budgeted sixteen and a half for the whole year. Um, you can see we're a little above a quarter of the way. One thing, uh, I think that we are not as good at doing is projecting our general fund revenues. And that would make sense. Um. You'd have to really be connected with the treasurer to make sure you understand what is he's recording, cause you're reconciling to it. And that's a, you have to be a great communicator and have a good conversation. And I don't know that there's always been that cohesion before.
Plus he receives so many.
Yeah.
Taxes that then immediately go out. To be remitted.
Yeah.
To the various entities, that it's like, it would look really different.
Yeah.
Cause those things aren't budgeted, they're just, we're just a holder of those taxes.
Yeah.
Right, like we're not budgeting for the amount of money that's coming in for everyone versus what's going out for everyone, cause we're the only collector of those funds.
Well, we, we don't budget for that on the finance side.
Right.
So, and and we wouldn't, cause some of those are in and then out immediately, but these are like what we know we usually pull on to.
Right, right, right. I guess that's what I mean, if we were connected, it would also, the fluctuations of what's coming in.
Yeah.
Versus what's going out would be far more extreme. Cause right now he has twelve million dollars. In the bank account.
Yeah.
Not, that technically is in the general fund in the holding line. That are just, and nine million dollars of those are going to be remitted. In the next two weeks.
Yeah.
So that would look crazy.
Yeah.
On our general fund.
That's a big part of why we don't. We don't match his bank account balance necessarily.
Right.
We're just worried about what's coming in and going out of the fund versus the budget.
Right.
Cause he doesn't even really know our countywide budget, it doesn't mean anything to him.
Right. Yeah, even though the money is landing in our fund.
Yep.
Yeah.
We have mapped, and this wasn't done before either. He has a line and we have a matching line for receipts.
Yeah.
And we have really gotten to where, like, we have tried to really mirror with our account codes, his account codes. So when we create something new, we tell him and we get him to also create that line.
Yeah.
And that cohesion hasn't really happened bef- before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause you would have had to have been like really.
Right there.
Communicator.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this bigger picture look is a little concerning, cause it's like. You know, if we're, are we trying to be at twenty-five percent for each quarter, right?
About, in generally, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the the revenues seem pretty low and then.
So revenues are a little different because the timing of the receipt of property taxes, they happen in two pretty big tranches.
Okay.
And all of that is in Q two.
Yeah.
Okay. So like either April or June are your due dates for property taxes and all of that is June, or all of that is Q two.
Um, so when I'm, sorry, this is gonna be another elementary question. When I'm paying my mortgage and it's, um, the portion that goes to the, uh, taxes is lumped in there. The. Mortgage company pays all that in a lump sum, it's on the Q two.
They might pay, they might pay yours, yeah, and so it's split into two payments for most people.
Yeah.
Your mortgage company could pay it all at once if they wanted to, that's really just depends on the mortgage company.
Okay.
They can also pay it monthly.
Okay, so it's kinda all over the place, there's no standardization of, oh, that's, okay. Guess that's, so on the treasures end, he's just getting a constant stream of payments from mortgage companies all over the place that hopefully add up.
Hmm.
At a certain point, it seems chaotic.
It is, at least they are getting them.
Yeah, yeah. But people already paid their mortgage off, all they have now is taxes and they're like.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're getting.
Yeah, they wa- the amount of people I see wa- it's every day, constantly, people are walking in and paying their taxes to.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
But also I know there's a large number of folks who literally do not pay until they get the notice of kind of default that it's gonna be a tax lien sale type of thing and then they'll pay.
Yeah.
You know, they kind of drag you out as long as possible, so that's why you could see those revenues coming in, like you said, throughout the year.
So those folks, are we sending them bills like once or twice a year or?
Patrick, they, yeah.
It's get sent out in May, then the assessor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Patrick collects.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so this is just representing just general fund in picture form, same thing, we just looked at.
Wait, can I pause for a second?
Yes.
Sorry. Uh, sorry, that was not clear, Andy, the assessment of what their property value is gets sent out in May. The taxes get sent out in like January, February.
Right, so it's.
And then they have until April.
So you get the unit's evaluation and then it's payable starting for, like you got your unit's evaluation this year, payable for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, it's just, it's, I only have experience with the the cabin we've got up there in the U P, we get a winter bill and a summer bill. And it's like, the summer bills are really expensive, they they bring the taxes for summertime as compared to wintertime, which is weird. I think because the revenue in the area is way higher with tourism and stuff.
Also, that's a different state.
I know, so I'm just trying to see where the differences and similarities are and there's just really.
You have one tax bill here.
Mm-hmm.
And it's this piece of paper that actually has a terrible thing at the bottom, you can tear it off at the bottom.
Yeah.
And you can pay your first payment, second payment or full payment.
Okay.
And you choose which one of those you wanna do and you bring that in with your check to the treasurer.
Okay, I I haven't seen those because we're still on mortgage.
Cause you're, yeah. Okay. So this is just in picture form. Everything that we we just went through, just in case you prefer. And then this kind of gives you like the different rollups, remember there's lots of line items in each of these, but these are the rollups. Countywide for revenue. And expenses. Stents rollups.
Transfers, you're gonna go crazy, huh?
We're doing a lot of shifting around.
Yeah, well, cause I guess we're fixing things up.
Well, in any time, um, you guys, um. Approve a supplemental, which which honestly supplemental should, of course, things come up that you guys are gonna say yes to that we didn't plan on, like we decided to groom the mineral well.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't, we didn't plan for that, cause we didn't know.
Yeah.
What you would pick to prioritize, right? So that's a transfer when it has to come from the general fund to another fund. So anytime you're a approving a supplemental that's from general fund to another fund for something that wasn't planned or honestly. We don't even have that many supplementals considering we didn't know what we didn't know when we made the budget, right? We had two years of unclosed books.
Mm-hmm.
We really don't have that many, but anytime you approve those things, then that's a transfer from one fund to another fund. Um, so this is non-general fund. These are all of our other funds. Our new rollups for non-general fund, so there's things like the mineral, the mine closure fund, uh, public health, Roden Bridge. Um, anything that does not live in the general fund.
What taxes would not go into the general fund? Because it's three million dollars in taxes that.
Special districts, though.
Yeah, um, also.
Like what, though? Like we.
Ten, not special districts. Would be charging taxes. In the county, like, as.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, that's school and ambulances, and we don't even touch that.
Yeah.
We've collected.
Or we're passed through.
I wonder, but we get past some, though, trying to think what we would get past.
Are there special districts that pay us back, is that what you mean?
Or I'm thinking like Adam, alleging tax fund, he receives that one point three percent. I'd have to really sit down and think about every single department, but.
No, I'm just curious, in general, for three point three million dollars, what that would be? Because Adams would be like three hundred thousand total. And not all of that would be a tax.
I can dig into it, come back.
It's okay for you. It's okay, I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll have the answer someday, I'm just curious. And can we get access to Tyler so that we can look through it?
You have it?
We have ac- never mind. So since we have access to Tyler, we can dig through this, love it.
Expenses, if you can't, so you, you would be able to, to look at, like, personnel expenses?
Sure.
Like, you, you can't click in to see what as, like, an individual is paid.
A staff person. Yeah, yeah, but all the different line that people build their budget.
Non-general fund expenses, if you haven't logged into your Tyler account, for a while, you may need to request a reset.
It, it resets it every so many days.
Okay.
Or it makes you reset it, and if you ignore that prompt to re- reset, you lose.
It's.
Reset.
Game over.
Half my life is getting financed to reset passwords.
Alright, um, non-general fund, this is the expense rollup. Takeaways. Overall, spending expenses are lower.
Because you're doing seven jobs.
Yeah. And also because we've really cut down on a lot of things, like, I, I audited the P cards when I was the finance director, and I saw that people were spending money on licenses that we have through I T, and I was like, no, no, stop.
I don't know if my.
He was I T.
I don't know if my commissioner coroner thing came out, but I mentioned that, like, I'm pretty sure, like, we're doing a good job. And our staff is really finding.
General fund spending is down. Um, non-general fund spending remains pretty consistent, uh, and that would make a lot of sense. Um, the majority of things live in the general fund. Um, but non-general fund, those are created, most of those are created by statute, so we know what they will be. Um.
Yeah.
It's like the mine closure fund, it, we, it doesn't really change, which, at the end of this year, we should have a discussion about how much we want to put into that each year, what, what is happening, it has happened, is at some point, it seems like people quit putting money into the mine closure fund. It would be wise to get a really good idea of, okay, where are we at, even if it's at the beginning of the next year, to be thinking, okay, what are we gonna put into that, so when we're doing the mills, we want to be thinking about, okay, how much should we have put aside? Do we have enough put aside? Do we want to put more aside? So we just really want to think about intelligently, okay, here's where we're at, as we're at the end of the year, so having your books almost closed by January is very important. So you get a clearer picture of, okay, here's where we're at. And so you have to think about revenues at the end of the year, you might say, oh my gosh, we're not at a hundred percent. We receive revenues up to sixty days beyond the end of the year, and post those back.
Yeah.
To the year that they, they actually belong in, so even when we look at the end of the year, we may have billed somebody for something that they haven't paid us yet, and they have thirty days to send that payment in.
So we have numbers that more accurate, accurately reflect what needed to be within a calendar year but might fall outside.
Yeah. And that's what finance does at the end of the year, is we accrue and defer, we defer revenues if they need to be deferred to the next year, and we accrue things back to the actual time period that they were billed for in. So that our revenues and the expenses we expect happen at the same time.
So conversely, somebody pays us early for something that might not happen until the next year, that we push it into the next year.
Yeah.
That's one of the problems.
Um, we did say we would take a budget, or a break at ten-ten, we're at ten-seventeen. Um, would you like to take a quick break?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I actually paused the recording, you want to take a minute?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Enjoy that.
Okay. Okay, twenty-twenty-six, um, budget, we're gonna have about the direction and guidance the staff has been given so far. Um, or will be given, um, so if you want to give some feedback, that'd be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
What just happened, I thought I had one more slide.
You were on the last one.
Oh, great. Oh, yeah, because it's right here. Um, so we are sharing out, um, a budget orientation, which this is brand new, we've never had this for staff before. This is just to say, like, hey, this is what a budget is, here's what, why we're creating one, here's what you value.
Okay, will you share the screen?
I think it's still shared.
Oh, is it? Even though we're on a different.
Yeah, I just shared the whole window, so I can play between documents.
Awesome.
I thought I did.
Um.
Close. Here.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Um, so this is our budget plan, we're kind of given, um, a message, and I, I remind people of what our fund balance policy is, so what we said in our last, uh, adoption of financial policies. Um, we ch- we changed our fund balance policy, what it had said was that we would, um, keep a minimum, I think the old one said it was three months of expenses on hand, but those expenses were based on what we budgeted, and I was like, well, that's, no. Um, so what we are doing now is making sure we at least have a minimum of three months of actual expenses, operating expenses, um, on hand to cover ourselves. And, and honestly, I don't think we've ever gotten our fund balance minimum even close to that minimum. Um, so we have said that the following opportunities and challenges would influence our multi-year strategy. Those are federal and state mandates, uh, we get a lot of unfunded and partially funded mandates that we have to do, so we don't really get the choice, so those have to inform our budget when we're statutorily required to do things, uncertainty in federal and state budgeting. Um, as we know, we've had a lot of, uh, funds cut or funding streams that we don't know that they'll actually be there, so we're being really mindful, um, to be conscientious and not spending where, you know, we don't have to. Um, workforce development and retention, we have really tried to bring our, our pay into the century we live in to retain and keep people who already live here. Uh, turnover can be really expensive, spending time, energy, dollars to retrain people every couple of years is a big waste of resources, it's much better for us if we have someone that knows their job, has received training, and can continue to grow and develop in their department. Um, service delivery transformation, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, on that note, I was reading an article the other day that was talking about that turnover, and typically, the average cost of replacing somebody is about twenty-eight percent of what their compensation was. You know, so it does, it makes sense to invest in who you have when they're the right people.
Yeah, I mean, you have payout leave, depending on the nature of their leaving, like, they can come back and we have to go and work with Chris to, you know, spend money on legal, there's a whole host of things that are expensive about people not staying. Um, so it really is to our benefit to keep qualified people that we do have. Um, service delivery transformation, this is pretty new, shifts in technology, A I is becoming more prevalent, technology is only making more complex and get rid of a lot of, of manual tasks as we, you know, are in the positions we're in, economic conditions and public expectations, what your, what your constituents are asking you to provide. Um, may require reimagining how we deliver services and on what level. Um, we also want to be really mindful that we've got other community partners, if they're providing a service, there's not a need to duplicate services, it's more of, can we support other people who are providing services that we maybe aren't providing, or that we're not set up to provide before investing money into doing something that another community partner is already doing?
Heck, yeah.
So we want to be mindful, uh, to think about those things. A budget plan, I'm so excited, we have a plan. Which, budgeting last year did not feel, um, that the plan was super clear, uh, so I think this will be really helpful. So economic diversification, having other, um, other, uh, economic opportunities that we invest in, like the airport, the economic return on an airport is a pretty high multiplier, I think it's two point five to three times multiplier of revenues for airports that you invest in, so whatever you invest, you can expect to get three times that back out of it. So making sure that we're thinking long-term about, okay, if we're gonna spend money, we'd like to see that that money provides, or that money we invested provides money back in that we can reinvest back into our community. Collaboration and partnerships, um, we've really talked with, uh, Chaffee Park and, there's one other county, it's escaping me right now, about a lot of regional partnerships, so where, where can we be partnering with those peoples to, uh, provide services? Uh, instead of trying to do everything alone.
Yeah.
When we can pull resources. Housing and affordability will remain a challenge, um, that will impact our workforce stability, economic development, and community well-being. We know that we have put some money into a, a long-term project with housing, so continuing to keep that as one of our, our things that we're working on, because we'll have to fund it now that we've started. Um, we just talked about some of the challenges we know that we'll face. So we work on the budget process, we're just kind of going through how we're gonna come up with that plan. Um, so the budget manual is linked in, and we'll look at that next. Um, so the budget orientation is just supposed to give you a structure and a foundation for why are we picking the things that we will prioritize or not? Um, and then the budget manual, a lot like our policies is, and our procedures are separate, this is like, how do you build your budget? Here's the why, and then this is how are we gonna get to a budget by the November deadline. Okay, so budget strategy serves as a guiding framework for the development of office and department budgets. This is really important, uh, and any feedback that you want to give now or later would be appreciated. Um, when I'm sitting down to look at capital requests, um, and I've asked for a couple of people to join me in looking at capital requests, so it'd be myself, Deputy County Manager, Finance Director, Michael, who understands some of the capital requests, like, for looking at a roof, is it a repair or is it a replacement? You know, his team is gonna know. Um, if we're asked for the same thing in multiple departments, capital request, that, that would take a priority in our mind, is if it would serve five or six departments, not just one. Then we think about, okay, is this something we invest in this year? So these strategies, um, these kind of give us the outline for how will we prioritize what we say yes to and no to. So to preserve and grow, reserve strategically. Prioritizing core services like DHS, public health, um, public safety, uh, capital commitment. We don't want to watch our buildings fall apart around us, that's really expensive in the long run, as we have learned. Um, investing in workforce capacity and stability. Um, expanding our technologies so that we can get rid of a lot of manual tasks and have people focusing on higher level tasks with their time. Um, leveraging external funding opportunities. Uh, we have not particularly been great at budgeting for the grant match, or if we have reimbursements, we have to budget for paying upfront until the reimbursement is received. And just making sure that we're doing that, it's really one of the biggest pieces of our twenty-three audit was that we weren't managing grants, well, a big part of that is, we, we weren't really budgeting for the match, right? Or we weren't budgeting and tracking, well, we spent twenty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-two, but did we actually make sure we recoup those in twenty-twenty-three if that grant was a multi-year grant? And when we did recoup them, did we return that money back to the general fund if the general fund funded the initial cost?
We go back in the right bucket.
Yeah, so you really just have to be a great tracker, and we, we were not so great at tracking, not, not because anybody was trying to not be great at it, we switched accounting systems during COVID.
Yeah.
And a lot of that information didn't get transferred across the platforms very well. Uh, we're now economic diversification, so if we're gonna spend money on things, are they things that would, um, create diversity for us? As we think about the mine won't be there forever. This is really a huge goal, and a big part of tracking the prior two years is start to have data-driven budgeting decisions. Do we invest in a new building and divest from three others? Well, who knows? We'd have to know what is the cost of a new building for the next twenty years versus what would we spend on these five buildings over the next twenty years? Um, and one of the big things I'd like to do once we get our finance director and a, and a new deputy on board and really rolling, is to take time to go do an audit of each of the buildings and try to get a good idea of, okay, here's every building we own.
Yeah.
How much is it gonna cost us over the next twenty years? What all needs to be replaced, and start to have the discussion of what does this cost us long-term, not just tomorrow.
Yeah.
So that we can prioritize, okay, which buildings do we invest in? Are there some buildings that we need to divest? We sell them, we're not gonna use them, they're falling apart, somebody else might need them. I think that's where we want to be using data to inform what we decide to do.
Is that, that was a project that my impression was that was gonna be worked on this year.
I'm gonna do my very best, and anticipate being all three humans.
No, 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 I, I think a big part of that work is Michael, and Michael's department, so I was just wondering.
A big part of it is Michael and his department, I do think there's some areas where it would be beneficial to have someone who is a specialist in understanding the building, like, and valuing it. I mean, he can tell us what short-term repairs are.
Yeah. Well, I meant just him, um, sorry, when we were looking at like the asset management plan at the beginning of the year, and tech was the first, like, category that got, you know.
We did cars, now we're on to tech.
Yep, we did cars first, our vehicles were first and then tech, and obviously, it was kind of like avoiding the big one.
Yeah.
But like, that, it's okay if it, it's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-six, and let's budget for it, for the professional services, we need to actually do it.
I do think it will be twenty-twenty-six project, because I think we need, we really need to have a deep discussion about who is the best person that really assess, because we really need real numbers.
Yeah.
Our staff, they're not specialists in asbestos mitigation, so I do think they can give some insight into projects that need repair, but I, I do think it'd be worth understanding what would it really cost us to, to find out, like, is this a keep or a sell type of situation?
Capital assets specialists.
Well, and some of those are.
Yeah, buildings are just as old as ours are.
And we need a building inspector, right, or someone who can.
Yeah.
Basically do that stuff and say.
You need engineers, you need architects, you need, yeah, hazmat folks.
I do think, um.
Can we get, we, we can put out R F Qs to start getting quotes for what it would cost to have somebody do that.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
I think that, um, once Liz is back, I'll, I'll, I'll work with her to start to figure out what we, what R F Qs we need to get back out on bid net. We need to get a list of the buildings from Michael first.
Do we have an idea of what that would cost?
That's what we'd ask.
That's what the. That's what the request for quote is. So we can get an idea, because I, I, I don't know on buildings that's old.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it's almost like a, it's, as much as I hate saying this, it's almost gonna be like a full-time job trying to figure out everything that we've got wrong with bricks and tiles and asbestos and whether it's sidewalks, whether it's buildings, whether it's parks. And if we're paying, you know, I don't know, is it a one-half FTE to add to public works of like, hey, we need a
It's probably contractor, because you need so many different specialties.
That's what I think you could afford.
Civil engineer, you need your structural engineer, you need your hazmat.
My brain keeps going to home inspectors, because they know, you know, like, most of them have experience in construction like Matt does. But most of them are certified for asbestos radon mitigation, like, they know all this stuff.
I don't think you'd have to pay commercial. To get someone that is like trained well enough commercially to do all of the things we'd need. I don't think we'd, yeah, get anyone qualified to.
And the trick is that it's not just.
Okay.
It's also renovation, like, you need to know, you need to understand renovation.
Commercial renovation.
And cost, not just inspection.
Steel IBS, not stick frames.
But I do think it's something we need to know, because we really can't plan if we don't even know what we have to start with.
Well, I appreciate that you're like trying to build in, how could we build this into what we're already doing?
It would have been nice if we started this twenty years ago and had someone who was like, okay, here's our next area of concern. You know, this is, this is red flag, the little place we need to bring in a team to assess this and.
Yeah, and instead we just gave somebody a rock who like started it all and didn't build any plans. I'm serious, that really frustrates me. We're celebrating all of the infrastructure that that person started and didn't put a plan in for maintaining. And that's, it's pretty timely, and I don't mind saying it. Yes, Candace, what's next?
So we have our guidelines to help people know when things are due. So we've got today, the eighth, our presentation. If there's direction from you guys, things you'd like to see me change, that'd be really helpful. Or something you want us to focus on, like knowing I need to go get the RFQ together, that's, that's helpful. The twenty twenty-six budget packet will be released to offices and departments on the fifteenth. August eighth, I'll be meeting with elected officials, directors, finance director to get people squared away on starting their budgets. We'll continue preliminary budget meetings. On September third, I'll review all of them, we're saying that's like when your drop dead date, it's gonna be done. And then September eleventh, we'll do the Q three memo, so that I'll be quarter two actuals. I'll do the presentation for you guys. And then guidance and a template are distributed to elected officials and directors. We provided template for people for all of those memos, we don't like ever do that themselves. Then we'll do those Q three memos and presentations are due.
How do you, how do you do a Q three memo if Q three isn't even done?
It's Q three is Q two actuals.
It is the.
We are in quarter three in life, but we're presenting the closed books for the previous quarter.
Yeah, can we, okay, love it, I can never read that.
October one, offices and apartments present their prelim budget to you guys. It's a great time to ask questions. Dig into something if you're just not sure about it or say, hey, we want to see this changed. Then we release it for public comment. December eleventh, you guys adopt the twenty twenty-six budget and certify the mill levy. We will not be, we will not be throwing that together last month, that was not my favorite moment. Significant budget and accounting practices. So we have some strategies around personnel. There will be limited recommended personnel increases in the twenty twenty-six budget. Position vacancies will be evaluated, so as things come up, we want to evaluate. If we're using IT better, does this position still make sense? Does this position need to have other duties than it did have before? Or does it even make sense for the position to still be where it's at? Offices and departments are encouraged to view vacancies through the lens of innovation. Reimagining roles to meet the needs of tomorrow, not the emergency of today. Resource allocation, new activities we generated through increased productivity or by phasing out activities that aren't needed when possible. New non-mandated programs should not be proposed unless they're offset by reductions or efficiencies in other programs. And then development or expansion of programs must be coordinated in partnership with the county manager and the finance director. We want to be evaluating partnerships. We want to think about who we've partnered with in the past and who we can be good partners to in the future. We will want to be really strategic with partnerships. For the simple fact that if you're not organized internally and you say yes to everything when you can't handle your own items, that's not being a good partner. That sets you up to fail the person you are trying to be a partner with. We want to make sure we've got our processes dialed and that when we say yes to partnering, we're doing it because we can actually do what we're saying we will do on paper. So I've had to say no to a few partnerships this year to say, hey, we recognize we need to get our own ducks in a row before we can be the partner you'd hope to see us be. But we want to talk about what other ways can we support you? And going forward, how can we make this a great partnership?
Yeah.
Instead of saying yes, we're gonna say yes to everything and then fail everyone.
It is really like a mutually beneficial aspect to some of these things where, or is it like worth it for us? You know, in our ideals, our drive, our, you know, I don't know, I sit in these UCOG meetings, I'm like, what? Are we getting, okay, I think we got some meal assistance programs for senior citizens. And like, I'm still really new at it and none of those meetings make very much sense. So it's like, but you know, things like that, I'm like, we're paying into this and what are we, what are we getting out of it?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that is, that is exactly true. And that's why we really want to be looking at MOUs that we have and leases that we have with people who are supposed to be providing services and saying, are you providing service that you're saying you'll provide? And make sure that we have it documented, so we know, hey, if you aren't, we have to provide this service. We would love to partner with someone who's set up to do it, but if you're not showing up or not providing something, now our citizens aren't getting what they need and we also didn't take on, like, for example, women, infants, and childrens. We, we let someone else take that funding in to provide that service for us. Well, is the service being provided and the level of care that our community needs? We want to be assessing those.
Could be shifted to a different partner who is doing, going above and beyond on certain things and we're only, you know.
Yeah.
Who's doing WIC right now?
Right now, it is, is it Elated Health, right, is our WIC.
Oh, okay.
Would I have a meeting with them this week to talk about how we can best outline that in the future? To make sure we've got everybody covered.
Yep, great, thank you.
So tech and efficiency, this is one of the biggest areas I really want to work on. We don't use automation where we can and it takes people out of doing high-level work and providing the best services when we aren't using our tech correctly.
Let the robots do the robot work.
Yeah, so that you can go serve humans.
Yep.
Down to your robot overlords. It can also slim down the, all the needed staff, you know? We've got a ton of people doing menial tasks, but I don't know, maybe there's a few instances of people doing things that could be.
Yes, there, there, there is that, and that's where we want to re. Does this make sense or is there a higher level role that could be provided here? That's where we want to be making sure we're working smarter, not harder. We are really excited about this, because we had a couple of things that people are in charge of that they didn't remember. And then we had to supplementally add their whole budget in, because they missed that they were responsible for an area. So in the general fund, assessor's office, board of commissioners, we, we have who is responsible for their budget. Andy, I'll help you. This doesn't mean you're entering it in Tyler. Last year, we had everyone enter their prelim budgets and then their budgets into Tyler. As you can imagine, if someone entered their preliminary budget and then no longer worked for us, what do you think the adopted budget ended up being? Their preliminary budget, not their adopted budget. And like the DA's office, we're gonna get a supplemental for them today. They sent out a spreadsheet to different counties to enter their actuals to do a calculation. They forgot to include one county, so their preliminary budget with the wrong numbers is what we adopted. So we're gonna have to do a supplemental because they sent out the wrong spreadsheet. We still have to pay them. This really outlines who on earth is responsible for entering each of these budgets so that we can also hold people accountable.
To maybe take a little bit off of your plate, is there a way I can sit down with the other person I know that seems really good at this stuff and go over our budget stuff?
Yeah, and we'll show you the two years of prior.
Is that like somebody in the finance room?
Oh, I'm pointing at you.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
We can learn together.
Yeah, can we like?
We can learn together.
Really try to.
We can just do, do, we do a work session that's just working on yours together.
That'd be cool.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, definitely when Matt gets back.
Because then we're all, then we're all learning together and Matt's the next chair, so he'll have to do it next year. We might as well do the learning all at once.
Yeah.
So we don't have, so you don't have to teach us every year.
But I could see that easily being not quick, fast work session.
There aren't that many lines in our budget, thank God.
Yeah, you guys don't have a lot. These are just going through our budget and accounting practices. I will do my best to provide a long-term financial forecast. I really, I'll just provide an Excel sheet for you that is a long-range forecast. I'd like to say that your long-range forecast is informed by your historic expenses in twenty-three and twenty-four are not the cleanest years, so I'd like to just say that this forecast will be changing as we get better actuals in place.
Yeah.
Long-term budget to actual trends that we can start tracking over time. Asset inventory, a big part of that will be getting those RFQs and being able to budget for what what we actually have and what we know we would need to replace. Revenue diversification, talking about how we can have different revenue streams coming in. This is something we have not really put a lot of time and energy into historically. We will do our best this year, but I do think fees and charges will be really taking a deep dive into in twenty twenty-six. To say, does this fee make sense? Are we holding everyone to the same fee schedule? And developing really clear fee schedules.
Strategy, like, we need to raise this, but to do it right, we can only increase so much each year, but I think.
Like if every fence out at the rodeo needs to be replaced, are we actually covering our cost in our rental fee to nonprofits? And when people are doing it for profit, that looks a little different, what we charge a nonprofit and then for profit.
Yeah.
What for-profit is using that facility?
The county owns those rodeo grounds?
Looking at that whole thing, looking at that whole thing.
Do we need rodeo fans?
They get used, well, not, well, not ours. In Chafee, they get used for a lot of different activities. And it'd be really smart to think about, are there people who are coming through, like, they're such a mineral show that people are really piled over, it's a huge thing.
I've traveled, I've traveled a thousand miles to go to those things with my wife.
So it's like, but they're already down here, is this like a spot they would want to stop and do the same thing? And they're like, you know, for profit, so.
But we don't have the same facilities, you know?
Yeah.
Like I've definitely, I hosted events down there, but they have an indoor facility.
I don't know, Bu- Buena Vista's general mineral show was pretty big and everybody sits in a field.
Tense, oh, tense, sure, sure.
It would just surround, maybe, maybe we could have a tent rental.
So just thinking like, could, could we? Yeah. Could we do a better job of how we upkeep it, but also like use revenues from, from people who would want, who are already coming through to us anyways, or?
When would that fall under though, like, is that far-strecked open space? Okay, cool.
That's why we want to get a good fee schedule put together. Um, I don't want to take too much time, because I think I'm over. So you, I'm gonna let you guys go through this.
This wasn't a packet, so.
Good.
Yeah.
I want to read the whole thing to you, but this really just goes through like what we will do in terms of revenues and budgets that we adopted, et cetera. And then the manual, I'm not gonna read this at you either, the manual, this is what staff is gonna get. They're gonna get a little worksheet, it's not in here, because we're still finishing it up just a little bit. But their worksheet will be their historic, their account codes, if they want to tell us they'd like it to roll up differently, this is their opportunity to do so. And this actually is a guide to walk them through each of the tabs in their spreadsheet and how to use it. Which we have not had this before. And as soon as Liz is back, she, myself, Will, who's interim, will be sitting down with each department to walk them through this, but this is like, hey, here's all your stuff, review it. So when you show up, you're ready with questions, not that you're just seeing it for the first time when you show up to meet with us. Pretty excited for this.
You should be really proud of this, Candace. You and staff should be super proud of this and the actual budget worksheets.
I mean, like, I'm just gonna speak on behalf of Lake County as a whole and say thank you, and we're so glad that you're here doing this.
Heck yeah, thank you.
Where were you twenty years ago, but hey, you know?
I've done a lot of work, but we've also reached out to counties who have really got it dialed. Weld County wins awards for their budget every year. And they gave us a lot of insight into the how they get to where they get to. And then I would be remiss if I didn't say a huge thank you to Liz for helping me format, pull things in, reword it. She is on vacation, a very well-deserved vacation, and she worked her rear end off to help pull these together before today. That woman does a lot of work, and so she deserves a really big thank you. Like, she, she works so hard. I was like, I hope your phone does not work where you're at, I don't think it does, I think she's out of the country. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, can I ask some questions about the budget? I went through the budget worksheet example, the airport?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm glad you pulled it out.
Sure, yeah.
I.
Find where that is.
You can keep talking, Elsa.
Okay. It would be wonderful if, well, I'm just gonna ask them a question.
Yep.
Where can they project out their five-year budget?
I'm not gonna put that in their packet for this year.
Okay, that's the next year.
Yeah, I'll do one for the county as a whole. I'm not gonna put that on people just yet, we've never even had a plan, a packet, or anything, so like.
It's only because, especially with the sheriff's department, he's got, he's got like a five-year plan to build up the personnel, equipment, facilities, like, that's a huge investment that he's asking for. And I want to have a bigger picture of budget conversation as opposed to like every year, this is what we're gonna, okay?
I, I'm gonna work with you on a five-year projection. So honestly, as soon as we get his actuals and his next year plan in, where is it? I don't use this version of Excel very often. But there are.
But there are. No? I had to slowly make it go. I'll have to find it. In the data tools and in the Power BI.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, these are blacked out. Um, so in the analyze data, sorry, I don't use this version of Excel. I don't use the three sixty-five version very often. I use the old school, but in the analyze data, you get your. Actuals in for, you can do up to three years of actuals and then you can have it project out the next couple of years.
Yeah, so that's a, before, I was a. Senior budget analyst for CDHS and I would take the actuals and we would use. Those and we would also use a, a little bit of a change in the formula to make it fair, based on case load complexity. But we project out.
Yeah.
The next several years. Using the analyze data, it will let you do forecasts, long-range forecasts, and you can set like your parameters. Um, for the most likely case scenario, the best case scenario, and the worst case scenario. So we'll project out revenues and expenditures.
Okay.
For departments.
Okay, the, I, I get that we can like.
I'm not gonna make people do that.
No, I get that you can do that in a, in a. Through. Uh, equations, but I'm specifically wondering like, okay, if this year Keith wants to have this many deputies.
Yes.
Next year, you'd have to like manually.
That's fine for personnel.
Yeah.
We just wouldn't do personnel in that as one of the lines that we'd project out. We would do that manually.
Right, and then of course, cost of living and then merit increases, you'd wanna build that in. I'm just, um, I really wanna understand. How the different departments want to grow.
Yeah.
So that as, as, so that we as elected officials can really make sure that our values and priorities are clear to the. Departments for our tenure of like, we will or will not allow you to grow in that way that you want to grow. I wanna be able to have that conversation around the budget.
Gotcha.
Um, but I get that maybe that's not a this-year thing, I just, especially the sheriff's department, it is our largest department.
Yeah.
It's our most expensive department. A lot of money has been put aside to invest in their facilities above other departments. And a lot of money was just put aside by the voters. I just want us to be really clear about what money from our general fund is going to invest in that department versus others.
Well, and I'll, I'll work with Keith on it, but because he is ele- elected, I only get so much.
Yeah.
I do.
Totally.
I can assist with the creation of the tool.
Yep.
I can't necessarily give the guidance, but I will help, and he's asked me about work.
That's. Yeah, yeah, that's us to have that conversation, but if the, if the tool is working properly.
Yep.
Then we can have an honest conversation.
Yeah.
And a real-time conversation about it.
And he, he does a lot of work on his projections externally from what we provide, so I know he'll bring those in.
Yeah. Great.
Too.
I mean, it's the same with any of the other electives too, like Patrick, we need to be able to have the peer-to-peer conversation.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the budget is, the budget tool is the way to have that conversation.
Yeah.
So that's why.
We, we hope that elected departments want to use this tool, but we cannot force them to use this tool. That would be a ask.
We can't, we can't force them to, but we can be really clear about.
Yeah.
What we will provide to them based on how they're going to engage with us. Um, so then the other thing is, I, I did not see. Is there a place where, um, kind of like a memo? Within here, we can, a department head can say, hey, these are our short-term and long-term goals and why are we this?
They will do that when they present their supplemental, their, um, prelim budget to you. They'll have an entire presentation. Each department has their whole presentation, it's like. Here are accounting goals, here are my long and short-term goals, here's the budget I set and the why. Here's what I'm asking for that's different. This template is really a tool to help them.
Yeah.
Get to their final product for you, and that is a little bit more of a, here's, and each group comes and presents to you. So you can ask questions and say, well, that doesn't make sense. Does this make more sense? And then you guys will give guidance based on that prelim budget. So each of those presentations, the department comes and gives those presentations.
Yeah.
To you, so you can ask them detailed questions about their plan and what their goal is.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yeah.
Um. Where? On this worksheet.
Yes.
Would a. Department head be able to inform the line items for the other departments like. Legal and broken bridge and IT.
So, what will happen is we will do that county manager and, and finance, because we will be able to see what they've done for the last two years. And we'll be able to say, this is what you spent last year, what do you expect to spend? We're budgeting for this in.
Okay, so they're not actually inputting that information onto this worksheet? That will be an individual request from each of those, like housing, I'm calling, because the money is housed in that place?
Yeah.
Like legal will be reaching out and saying, hey, you had this over the last two years, I'm anticipating this.
They won't, we will do that, reveal them.
Okay.
Finance and county manager.
Finance will do that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So that, that's how legal or, or IT or HR will be informed for their own budget.
Well, more.
Okay. Um.
Cause we've never actually given people this at all, which, you know, it's really nice, cause we'll have the last two years.
Yeah. Yep.
We'll have notes if they wanna change or things are rolling up.
And then, um. Two more questions.
Mm-hmm.
Where would? Where would one get direction as to how much to budget for merit increases?
So that lives in, um. HR's budget. We budget for the, the max amount that we would give. Even though everyone will not get that max.
For sure, yeah.
Cause it's based on your performance.
Yeah.
And a big reason we did that is in the same way that you can save money by not prioritizing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, training.
Yeah.
And education. You can also save money by not prioritizing merit increases actually based on people's merit.
Yeah.
So those live in HR and we budget as if everyone in the county got whatever the full amount is and you guys will have to inform us. Do you want that to be three percent?
Mm-hmm.
Or two or?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Cause that was voted on last year and you guys will do that before. We'll, we'll make a suggestion and say, here's what it would be.
Yeah.
But that, we really beefed up how we're reviewing people. Because I think that merit increases have to be tied to real outcomes.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it was.
You have to have a paper trail.
Yeah, a, and we had a paper trail, but it didn't feel very meaningful.
Yeah, and it was actual work.
It was actual paper, but also it, it didn't, it just gave you a place to rank.
Yeah.
Like numbers without real feedback, and this year we're like, give a score for how they did on a particular area.
Yeah. Yeah.
And now you have to give me a justification.
Justify. Yeah.
And that does take a lot of work for a department director, um.
For real.
But I think I have the most direct reports, so if I can find time to get it done, I don't have a lot of, uh, leeway for it not being done in a real way. Which is why this year, when we are implementing the new way of reviewing, you have to say, okay, what did you witness? See what outcomes happened that made you give this score? So that it's really meaningful and it's not just a. Checkmark, everybody gets threes or I don't like Bob, we get ones, you know, like you, you just have to make it to where it's transparent and fair.
Yeah, well, that's a major attribute of being a director level, is you have to be able to do that, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then when it comes to grant reporting, when the, the. Finance department is going to click in the first, uh, the two years of actuals.
Mm-hmm.
Where will, I, I, I get where like our grant request, requests will be.
Yeah.
But when it comes to tracking. Required matches in the budget, so that people can't.
Yeah.
Play around with those required matches, how is that going to be clear to directors?
So we now track grants with their own. Like each grant has its own line.
Yeah.
So we can start to have the conversation with people, okay, here's what you did to the grant last year.
Yeah.
Are any, any revenues that you did not receive that you know you will receive for expenses?
Yeah.
And we'll work with each department to really try to have a great, and that's why now, if you wanna apply for a grant, we make you. Come in front of a group called Eagle, which I did not name.
Yep.
Every time I see that, I'm like, we're going down to Eagle? Like this is a.
No.
Going down to Eagle, I know, I know.
I think it's cause they're the group that has the highest view of things.
It's, it's like, it's like an executive meeting.
Executive team.
Yeah, yeah, but it's like legal, HR, finance, like everybody who need to like. Understand what the heck you're doing and we require so much more than ever has been required for a grant. You have to have a budget.
Yeah.
Has to be submitted in Airtable, so it lives in perpetuity, even if you don't work here in perpetuity.
Yes.
We need to see year by year what you expected. Because even if you cease to be our employee, we can pick that grant up where it got left off.
Yeah.
The director has to be in, in the know about the grant, the person managing the grant has to have a second. So we've never really had that good of a retention place. Or asked for things that we would need to make sure, oh, we got three hundred thousand dollars two years ago? Well, at the end of the year, we have to do a supplemental and move it forward.
Yeah.
Just, there's not been good enough tracking.
Yeah.
And if the person that had that knowledge in their head left.
Yeah. So how will this, how will this, uh, Excel document work with Airtable so that we're? Cause if it's multiple systems, I just wanna understand how things aren't.
Sure, so this doesn't live in Airtable, we will keep these on the teams. Um, we'll have Liz create a folder for each department, so we've got it saved. Um, Airtable only, so, we only pay for so many licenses, so the manager, county finance.
Mm-hmm.
They would be able to access the backend. And IT, of course.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, that's really more about us helping people. We don't expect that people have memorized their budget or.
Yeah.
It does require finance to do a, a lot of work.
So once all of this is done, completed with the budget, we've all. Preliminary, can you just walk me through on the backend how it works? Like for an preliminary budget gets inputted into Airtable and then we right-size it?
No, it gets put into Tyler, your preliminary budget.
Yeah.
There's a period where Tyler is open and it can be edited.
Yeah.
It gets locked down, we present it to you guys, you ask for any changes.
Yeah.
Uh, we unlock it so changes can be made. We re-lock that preliminary and then that preliminary, we actually print out a report, like it's every account code, every line item.
Mm-hmm.
And then come back to you guys and that's what actually gets adopted.
Okay. How does, um, how does Airtable interface with Tyler?
It doesn't and we don't really need it to. It's just the one place that all of our information can live. Like people's grants that they plan for, like somebody's grant spreadsheet wouldn't be in Tyler.
So when the preliminary budget is being created, people are looking at Airtable to inform Tyler as to those long-term grants?
Yes.
Got it.
And finance is helping them.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to understand where our cracks are.
Yeah.
Using two different systems.
We could try to do a cross-over between Tyler and Airtable eventually, I mean, I think it probably would pay for a pretty stout API. But they're not intended to work together, so I don't even know if an API exists. At this juncture, we'd have to have someone create an API to look at the two.
Okay.
Um.
That's fine, I'm just curious, since, since grants have been. Were a bit somewhat complicated and we've. Dropped a lot of balls with grants, I want us to still be able to use them, so I just wanna understand on the backend.
Yeah.
Where our weak spots will still be, that.
Yeah.
Will be paid attention to, I just wanna understand.
Ri- right now, things like that live in people's emails, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which are not all in one place, there are a lot of emails to live in. Um, but this will at least get things into really two main places.
Two spots, yeah, that's great.
Cause Tyler's not really meant to be like a document retention system.
Yeah.
It's just meant to be able to upload like documents that the auditor would wanna see. A contract that's been executed and recorded.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, I love this so much. I cannot wait.
That's all I have.
Oh, gosh, capital requests, sorry, let's just talk about this now.
Yep.
Capital requests when it comes to our larger asset capital infrastructure.
Yep.
Our infrastructure. How does a director request? Larger infrastructure issues, still through this.
Yeah.
So say the library wanted a new roof.
Go take it.
Perfect.
Need to.
Say this is true, which it is. They would write it in their capital budget request, they wouldn't send it to.
Yeah, it would go to put into their.
It would go into the capital request.
Uh-huh. In the past, the, I think, just finance, county manager have just decided. Which things will come before you guys, based on what we think we can afford and then you guys have input. Um, what we're really trying to do is loop in, Michael, IT, have kind of a group review them. So again, we're reviewing from multiple lenses.
Yeah.
And we're saying, oh, look, five people asked for the same thing. Could we get better pricing if we just put out an RFQ and found one vendor who would provide this for all of us? Like we, I think one of our capital requests last year were new cameras. But then we found out that like. Three different departments were trying to do cameras and I was like, oh, if we just use one vendor.
Yeah.
And get cameras, that, that gets our pricing down, it gives us all in one system, not eighteen multiple systems and I have to be serviced by five different people. It just gives us a better way to, to look at it holistically as a group and not just one person with everything living in their head.
I love that. Is it, does it then go?
To you guys.
Say it, say it's cameras, let's use that.
Sure.
Say three departments are asking for cameras.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and it goes through the filter and IT is like, sweet, we could just do one camera package. Then does it go back out to the other departments to be like, hey, have you, are you considering asking for cameras next year or like? How, how do we capture bigger?
Usually, usually we just try to reach out to departments who we know might need them.
Okay, okay.
We don't offer it to every department because there might be a department that's like, camera, that sounds great. They don't really have a need, you're like, no, not you, not you, Bob.
For sure, just wondering about the like, the like, the economy of scale and the like. Not group think, but kind of the group think where it's like, oh, well, this, this one department is innovating. And the, these other departments.
Aren't.
Aren't innovating, and so I'm just wondering if that, if those innovations can also come back out, not as like a, hey, who wants cameras? But like a, have you ever considered economizing and using cameras?
Yeah.
That kind of.
And that's why IT is usually part of that review group, so that they're, cause cameras fall under IT, phones fall under IT.
Right.
Um, a lot of things.
Yeah.
That would be capital requests fall under them, that's why we're asking Michael to join us, even though he doesn't do the normal Eagle review.
Yeah.
For capital requests, we would want him to be a part of.
Cool.
Does that make sense? Does it not make sense? Um, one, one thing I didn't mention, that I don't know why talking about this is making me think about it, um, the fleet. I would like to, not that I want more funds, I don't, but I would love to see our fleet be its own fund. We may have to have a discussion about language around that, and a lot, a lot of other counties have their fleets separate.
Mm-hmm.
Because then you can really track the cost over time.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
You can't just do it through accounting codes?
You can, but it gets me, I think, kinda messy. A lot of people have their fleet because it is such a big extent separate.
Yeah. Okay.
So, but, we don't have to do it, but it is something we've kind of tossed around because we really see a lot of other counties keep their fleets separate. Cause then there's the question, well, whose budget does it live in? And then it gets left out of the budget, cause no one remembers whose budget got moved to for the year.
Yeah, yeah. Huh.
Maybe the same thing like we would do with the, what we were just talking about with.
Right.
We go like. Fleet and then each line item is a department, right?
Yeah. Okay, interesting.
Cause it did get left out this year.
Right, no, we, uh. Sounds like awesome.
It was a bonus, like two hundred fifty thousand or something.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
That's quite large.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that's right.
Twenty percent of our budget.
That's all, that's all. Thank you, that is wonderful, I love it so much. Will we get to see people's worksheets?
If you want to.
Yes, please. I'm, I really, um, I appreciate rollups, and I understand their value, but I also really enjoy line by line.
That's why you have Tyler to access.
I, I will get Tyler access again, it's on my list.
Um, if you will email me a reminder, I'll reach out to get that reset for you.
I can just do it.
And also, do you, do you guys get? Do you get your commissioner report from Nikki, right, at county table? I think you do, maybe she sends them to me, I can forward them to you.
Like our budget, what we've done, like for the year?
Yeah, yes, she sends out monthly reports.
Yes, we got those.
Um, Chris, where can I find copies of the. Contracts people sign when they use something like the rodeo grounds or something like that?
Um, PROS handles that permitting for the county facilities.
Okay.
That kinda stuff.
Okay.
Um, so they should. They should have some documentation.
Oh, my goodness.
If, if it requires other types of permitting, CBD should have tracking on that for special event permits.
Okay, I don't know if I'm gonna need it, but I just wanna know where to start digging, if I get a lot of pushback, I'm like, hey, we gotta charge you guys for the horse thing, but. It's part of the agreement you signed.
It's what they signed, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanna be able to pull that up and be like.
That's the permit through.
Here it is, exactly, whatever.
Well, I, that permit actually, as I say, the permit that they would have been issued from PROS to use the rodeo grounds has language in it that. If the county accrues expenses, essentially, they have to reimburse the county.
Okay.
So PROS.
Yeah, PROS is, yeah, Karen, again, Karen Unsky is the, the one who primarily processes, I think, those, those permit applications.
I'm gonna talk to her anyway about. Talk to the part.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Are we done?
We're done.
Well done.
Well, thank you so much, this is incredibly complex, but. It is eleven twenty-eight on night clock, and, uh, let's conclude today's work session with Lake County Board of County Commissioners, thank you, staff.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Elsa.